I want to welcome you to our pre-board event. Many of you would expect Ms. Margaret Sharp to be giving you an announcement, welcoming you, and introducing tonight's fine arts entertainment. But as you can tell, I am not Ms. Margaret Sharp. My name is Regina Sanford, and I am here to bring you a very special event to highlight some of our STEM initiatives throughout the district. We are going to have four competitive robotics teams give you just an inkling of what they do on a regular basis. The first team that we have is Boyette Junior High. Their team is called The Gear Heads. Their teacher is Ms. Pat Coy. She's also the Project Lead the Way teacher. We have two parent coaches with us tonight, Drs. Clark Rowley and Dr. Kevin Stokes. The students, and students, would you wave please? Matthew Busby, Joey Hyde, Carter Stokes, Peter Fob, Claire Pecu, Anna Yu, John Yu, Brendan Lutter, Corinne Grant, and the principal, Christian Munson, just walked in. At the back of the room, we have Honey Island Elementary School. They have five teams, but the team with us tonight is the Lego Rockstar Heroes. Their teachers are Crystal Elders and Paula Conway, and the coordinator is Melanie Locker. The students tonight are Rachel Marsh, Zachary Marsh, Brady Rollins, and Ethan Speed. Principal Mary Jane Smith is also with us tonight. At the back of the room, our large group tonight is from Lake Harbor Middle School. They have two teams, the Cool Crafters and the Titanium Owls. Their teachers are Kalinka Thurber and Nicole Peterson. The students representing Lake Harbor tonight are Alexa Smith, Graham Rafferty, Alan Torres, Carter Dwee, Jake Mizel, Alex Regus, Anna Dussatier, Trey Temples, Corey Koenig, Jacob Krupa, Jonathan Budwin, Olivia Stewart, Daniel Andrews, Emmy Miller, Zachary Meyer, and Dominic Howell. Their principal, Ms. Susan Patan, is also present tonight. And the final team on our showcase comes to us from Mandeville Junior High. And the Gateway to Technology class has two teams, a red team named M Squared and a blue team named Cubed. Their teacher is Ms. Tracy Martinez, and the students tonight, Kyle Curry, Julian Thompson, and Casey Anderson. And Mary Ann Pachara is their principal. And I will put a plug in for Mandeville Junior High. This is their second presentation today, so I would like for you to also give them a round of applause. And the reason that we are doing this tonight is because STEM is a critical need, not only in St. Tammany Parish in Louisiana, but throughout the nation. So it is my hope that you will be both entertained and enlightened, because these are some of the sharpest kids in our district. And our community partner, Ms. Leah Brown, is also going to be joining us tonight from Chevron. The way that we're going to do this, I want you to think of yourself as being in a quadrant, with the four corners representing the schools and sites that you will visit. So I would like for you to spend about eight, nine minutes with each of the groups. I would like for you to go to the nearest team, and then rotate clockwise throughout the room, and talk to these kids, because they are very engaged in their presentations. Thank you, and welcome.
Tonight, we are showcasing four of our schools. We have multitude of programs, but we're showcasing only four STEM initiatives that are being done throughout the district. It's very important that these students get the spotlight that they deserve. Tonight, we have Boyette Junior High, Mandeville Junior High, Lake Harbor Middle School, and Honey Island Elementary School with us being spotlighted. The board members are going to be able to talk to the students about their competitions, their particular designs, how their program has changed, and the specific goal that they're trying to achieve in their competition. So they'll actually get to see some of the demonstrations and some of the robots. This is important, because STEM education throughout the nation is a growing need. Students need to understand why science and math are important. These programs offer students the opportunity to integrate and apply the knowledge that they have, while at the same time, learn to solve problems, team-building, collaboration, critical thinking, as well as communication. And all of those are skills that are transferable regardless of your college or career choice. It's important for our board members tonight to see the innovative programs going on in the districts, because we're wanting to expand these. And these students are the little entrepreneurs of tomorrow, and they're going to be our future leaders. These programs, we need to grow throughout the districts. They need to start at the elementary level and work all the way to the high school, as well as become dual enrollment opportunities for our students. Tonight, the hope is that parents will also see how dynamic these programs are and enroll their students as well.
And I want to invite the Boyette team to please come forward with their sponsors, both their teacher/faculty sponsor and their parent representative sponsors. Because if you haven't been keeping up with the news, and you haven't read the newspaper as of late, this is the only team in the entire state of Louisiana who has been the top of their game. They have won the state championship. They have been invited to the open championship for the first Lego League, and they have been working for five years, is that correct, guys? For five years to achieve this goal, but they're not done yet. So they will progress to San Diego, California, in May to represent not only St. Tammany Parish, but the entire state of Louisiana. So I would like for you to give them a round of applause. We appreciate you coming out tonight, and I thought this was a culminating way to end our showcase, and have a safe travel home. And you're welcome to join us for our board meeting, which begins at 7:00.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Randolph, would you call the roll for us?
Mrs. Heinz.
Here.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Lou.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mrs. Tipton.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Sealy.
Here.
Mrs. Mullitt.
Present.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Paints.
Here.
Mr. Lamar.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario.
Now, Mr. Alfred is going to lead us in the invocation and pledge. Would you please stand?
Dear Heavenly Father, bless each and every one of us tonight. Give us the ability to conduct the business that comes before us. And a special prayer for all the robotics teams that was over in the room over there, which did a great job. Bless each and every one of them. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the land of liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our March 20, 2014, meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a recognition of visitors, and we have some good community partners here with us. And Mr. Foltz, if you'd tell us a little more about that.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Tonight, board members, I am proud to announce to you the results of our fundraising day for Stark. On February 28, our students and our employees were allowed to wear jeans for a dollar or more donation for this most worthy organization. All the money collected, every penny of it, goes to benefit Stark. The goal of Stark is to help people with developmental disabilities. Tonight, as you can see behind me, we have many people here from Stark, led by their director, Ms. Diane Bayham. And we have a video that we're going to show you in a minute that highlights the many things that Stark does for our community, and has done for so very, very many years. But before we do that, we want to share with everyone probably what all these people really came for, and that was the money. The students and our employees, I am happy to tell you tonight, and so extremely proud to tell you, that we raised over $19,240 for Stark. And I think, to me, and each of you know that we do four of these a year, and each of you know the money that comes in, and how generous all of our employees are, our parents are, and our students. But I think when you see this number tonight, it tells you how many parents, how many students, how many families, how many community people have been touched at one time or another by the professionalism, by the generosity, and by the helping hand, not a handout, but a helping hand, that Stark gives to the people in our community. And being a lifelong resident of St. Tammany Parish, and being a lifelong friend of Diane Bayham, I can tell you, there's not a person in St. Tammany Parish that does more for the developmentally disabled people than Diane Bayham has for her entire life. I'm extremely proud to have her as my friend. I'm extremely proud to have her leading Stark, and I'm happy tonight to present this money to them, and I know it will go to a wonderful cause. So Diane, if you'll come up and accept that, we appreciate it.
I sure will.
We'll get it. How about this? You want to come up?
I'll pick Jack.
Well, do something. All right, I tell you, we'll show the video first, and then we'll let you say a few words.
At Stark, the mission is to help individuals reach their full potential, from early intervention to adult services. Stark is dedicated to finding the ability behind the disability.
Stark is an organization that provides a lifetime of services to infants, children, and adults with developmental disabilities. Stark is in the business of independence. We try to help every individual that we serve to reach their full potential.
Proof of Stark's mission is found in their Child Development Center. Changing lives starts here.
We are an inclusive child development center, and what that means is we accept children of all abilities. The idea is that they learn from each other. It's a foundation for them.
My child's been here since 2006. As a one-year-old, they have been so loving and supportive of my daughter. They respect and understand her needs.
Stark's mission doesn't stop at childhood. Providing support and encouragement through adult service programs helps an individual become a contributing member in the community.
We provide work training to adults 18 years and over with various degrees of developmental disabilities. You become more than just someone that you work with. You become friends. You become a part of their lives.
Providing opportunity for employment and independence is an integral part of Stark.
We're a full-scale commercial linen service. We process 4,000 pounds of linen per day. We're able to provide competitive employment for individuals with disabilities. When you walk in each morning, you're greeted with handshakes, hugs, smiles, people that are excited about being at work and that take pride in what they do.
We're becoming an integral part of our community, and I would think the community would really miss us if we weren't here.
If you think back 40 years ago, there was no place for somebody with a developmental disability to have a job. For the last 40 years, Stark has supported this community, these very special people, and it's impacted all of us.
Stark's mission hasn't changed since 1972. Despite financial setbacks, the mission remains the same.
We have accepted the challenge to provide a lifetime of care and services for those individuals with developmental disabilities. We need your help to bridge the gap between the funding we receive and the services we render.
We never want to fail to see the beauty of a rose despite its thorns, and we never want to fail to see the abilities of any person that God has made despite any disability that they may have.
Please be generous and make a donation today.
All of us are just one accident or incident away from needing these same services ourselves. Please give today.
For more information, visit us at www.starkla.org.
And tonight, in behalf of this entire school system, this is the real money with the check right here. So we give this to you, and I'm going to ask you to introduce all the other community leaders that you have here.
Thank you so much, and y'all did this without even seeing the video where we were asking for money. So thank you so much. I want to share with you that a little over 42 years ago, a beautiful little girl was born in Slidell, Louisiana. She had hair as black as a telephone. Her skin was like porcelain. Her eyes were dancing with excitement when she was born, ready to meet the world to which she had been born. Her parents, Laura and Jerry, were so delighted, they named her Heaven. I asked Laura, I said, "How did you choose that name?" She said, "Well, I had a friend in high school whose name was Heaven, and when I saw my daughter, our firstborn child, I couldn't name her anything else." What they did not know was how their daughter would touch the lives of thousands of people through the years. Because when Heaven was less than one year old, she was bit by a mosquito carrying encephalitis after one of the hurricanes, and it left her functioning at that age for her entire life. She's now in her late 40s, has never spoken a word, but again, has touched the lives of thousands of people, because her parents were determined to find local services, and they founded Stark. And at that time, it was Heaven, and then just two other children. And so they named our organization St. Tammany Association for Retarded Children. It didn't take very long until we realized there were a lot of adults out there, some children that had already become adults, and so we began serving them too. And so we changed our name, wanting to keep Stark, to St. Tammany Association for Retarded Citizens. But through the years, we've began to serve people with all types of disabilities, and today, our name is simply Stark of Louisiana. And Stark stands for Services, Training, Advocacy, Resources, and Community Connections. Services for a lifetime. Training at all ages, whether it's our little children, or it's our adults, or whether it's us. Often, we are the one that receive the blessing every day from the things that we are taught. Every moment is a teachable moment, and many a times, it's us that is the recipient. Services, training, advocacy. Advocacy is what you have done tonight, in promoting more awareness of who we are, what we do. You do Mardi Gras beads in your schools, lots of drives there. You save telephones for us. You collect picture frames for us. And I'm not sure that you know this, but we do your dust mops for all the schools. And so every day, you will see a Stark vehicle pulling up to the schools and delivering those dust mops that are used in all the schools. So you are an advocate for us. My mother always said, "Two heads, four eyes." So the more people that we have watching for us for jobs and opportunities to serve, we want to do that. Resources. The St. Tammany Parish School Board Partnership never ceases to amaze me. Y'all provide our training to our staff year after year, and this year, we've had the opportunity to do a lot of things with the school system. Last week, interviewing individuals who will be graduating this year and who are looking for jobs. And what a joy and a blessing that was. It's a moment I will never forget. And then those community connections, many of you do things in the school with the Kiwanis Club, and they have their action clubs, and they have one at Stark. So when there's coat drives going on, our folks are in those coat drives. When there's food drives going on, our folks are collecting food. And so we are an integral part of what you do. You're certainly an integral part of what we do. When I say advocates, I've got to tell you, some of the greatest advocates we have are our board members. I'd like to ask our board members and staff to stand tonight. This is Mr. James Murphy. Behind him is Mr. Mike Kilwinowski, the president of our board, Mr. Steve Deverney, Mr. Vic LaSalle, one of his boys works on the school board mops on a regular basis, Mr. Jared Ricky, Mr. Bill Davis. These are our board members, and then Mark Bayham is our assistant director at Stark, and Suzanne Bujwa is our director of operations. So we are so grateful to have the opportunity to serve. We use the phrase often, "Tell me I forget, show me I remember, involve me and I understand." Our board members have a gift for each of you that will just be a little goody bag that you can look through at your pleasure and just see some ways that you might get connected at Stark. And I will close with a quote that I use often. It's just one of my favorite. It motivates me, it motivates our staff, it motivates the folks we serve. And it simply says, "I am only one, but I am one. I can't do everything, but I can do something. What I can do, I ought to do. What I ought to do, by the grace of God, I will do to the very best of my ability." Thanks so much to each of you. God bless you.
Trey, if I could just say real quick, we have this gift we'd like to present to you. This was through our art therapy program, and this was actually done by Heaven, which is the first child that Stark ever supported, and something I'm very proud of, being with Stark for the last 13 years. Heaven started in 1972 as one child, and now we serve over 1,300 individuals with disabilities and their families, so.
This is special to me, because I actually have, I think there's a note card that Heaven that we have actually framed at my house on the shelf, so this will go great with that here in our office as well. So we thank you all for this, and we're proud to be a partner with you. Yeah, don't forget the name.
Thank you so much. They wanted to take a picture, board members, if y'all would come right over here.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Fabulous organization. All right, we'll move on now to special recognitions. The first one is a recognition of March as Youth Art Month. And I'll call on Ms. Peggy Sharp.
Tonight, we are celebrating fine arts during the month of March. Although the month is set aside to honor Youth Art Month in our schools, fortunately, we in St. Tammany Parish Public Schools emphasize the fine arts every day of the year. The mission of the art, music, dance, and theater teachers in St. Tammany Parish is to enhance the lives of all students through authentic fine arts instruction. Certified teachers provide comprehensive programming utilizing parish, state, and national standards for the arts. Certified teachers, the benefits that art instruction provide for a student's education can be profound. Our students are extremely fortunate that Superintendent Foltz and you, the board, have continued to support arts education. Research consistently indicates that students with fine arts education backgrounds score higher on standardized tests, have higher attendance rate, have higher graduation rates, and have significantly better reading and math skills. Additionally, things that are hard to measure, such as teamwork, determination, creativity, and discipline, help lead to success for our students for the rest of their lives, no matter what future vocation they may pursue. Tonight, I would like to introduce to you two students who exemplify the results of what solid, fine arts instruction in a public school can manifest. First, I would like Ms. Anne LaBrash to, an acting talented arts program coordinator, Ms. Donald Ront, to come to the podium. Anne is a junior at Fountain Blue High School. She is a student of talented arts teacher, Ms. Brianna Fashion. Anne sings in the church choir and has performed in musicals at Playmakers Theater in Covington. Anne's musical passion is opera. And if you happen to go to the Macaroni Grill where she works, she is apt to break into song at the drop of a breadstick. Tonight, we would like to recognize Anne for one more very special accomplishment. She recently auditioned for the famed Interlochen Center for the Arts Summer Camp in Michigan and was offered a scholarship to attend this summer. This nationally renowned Center for the Arts was founded in 1928. Located in northern Michigan, the high school vocal artist summer program elevates the skills of the serious student of solo singing, preparing her for further vocal training for post-high school events. Anne will be able to develop her breadth of knowledge and experience through private lessons, solo recitals, stage performances of opera scenes and song, a rich choral ensemble experience, and numerous classes ranging from music theory and foreign language diction to auditioning skills. Anne's mother is here, Ms. LaBrash is with her tonight. We join them in wishing Anne the best of luck and know she will have a rewarding summer. Help me congratulate Anne for her amazing accomplishment and wish her well. Another phenomenal student who has benefited from arts education in our school system is Fountain Blue Junior High 8th grader, Ms. Reese Chafin. Please help me welcome Reese and her art elective teacher, Ms. Adele Watkins, to the Reese is beginning to make a name for herself in the visual arts world. Not only is she artistic, Reese is a soccer player who also likes to hunt. She gets up close and personal with a lot of wildlife on her hunting expeditions. This came in handy, as she recently captured first place in the Wild Things Art Contest. She also received first place in the statewide Youth Art Month Louisiana Flag Design Contest. Her work has been accepted into the Salad Day's Art Show, as well as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the St. Tammany Parish School Board. Many of you have seen this book. Some of you have studied it for hours. And you may notice on page 104 is this beautiful whitetail deer, and that is Reese's artwork. And just recently, Reese's art won honorable mention in the 2013-2014 Louisiana School Board Association Art Contest. I don't think Reese knows this, but the School Board Association has sent her a beautiful ribbon, and we have a certificate to present to her for her outstanding rendition of the Louisiana Whitetail Deer. That came straight from Baton Rouge. Here is Reese's winning entry for the Youth Art Month Louisiana Flag Design. Let's see, she incorporated a lot of different things. And here is Reese's deer, which won the honorable mention for the Louisiana School Board Contest. As you can see from Reese's notes, she has learned quite a bit of art technique from her art teacher, Ms. Watkins. She had to use an animal native to Louisiana. She used the charcoal to intensify the darkness of the whitetail deer. The black shadows give him a majestic look. The white charcoal highlights and give him detail. And the shading technique, known as pointillism, is to add texture to the deer's coat. Reese is joined by her mother and father. Let's show Reese, her teacher, and her parents their appreciation for her hard work. The opportunities that these two students have been afforded because of the Fine Arts Program in St. Tammany Parish Schools represent the thousands of other students engaged in art, dance, music, and theater. In St. Tammany Parish, we celebrate the arts during the month of March, but we live the arts every day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. And we do appreciate all of our students and their fine artwork, and we're especially pleased to highlight these two this evening. Thank you for being with us. National PTA Awards, Ms. Sharp.
Our school theme this year, Working Together for Success, has served us well. Another great organization with a similar theme is the National PTA. Their theme is supporting student success. And that's just what they have been doing for a very long time. The National PTA was founded on February 17, 1897. To commemorate this historic date, the National PTA recently sponsored the PTA Take Your Family to School Week during the week of February 17 through the 21st. PTAs throughout the area, throughout America and Europe, hosted family-focused events with an emphasis on addressing risks associated with high school dropout, bullying prevention, multiculturalism, improving literacy and math skills, and increasing art participation. To spotlight the importance of family-school partnerships and enhance family engagement efforts, the National PTA awarded 51 schools throughout America and Europe with $1,000 grants as recognition for the school's dedication to the family engagement concept. Of the only 51 schools throughout the United States and Europe, I am proud to say that two of those schools are right here from St. Tammany Parish. In fact, they were the only two schools in the state of Louisiana to receive this award. It is an honor to ask the principal and the PTA representatives from Marigny Elementary and Chafunkta Middle to please come to the front to be recognized.[714.19][714.19](APPLAUSE). Representing Marigny Elementary tonight, we have Principal Leslie Martin, Assistant Principal Amy Haley, TRT Lauren Huvall, and the PTA President Julie Fauchet. To tell us a little bit about their family engagement activities at Marigny Elementary, I'm going to ask Principal Leslie Martin to come to the podium.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here. We partner with our PTA. We have a fabulous PTA. And we focused on two major events, or hosted two major events at our school. One was Muffins with Mom, in which over 250 moms and special friends joined us one morning at breakfast at Marigny. And then, we also hosted our Starfish Showcase, which is our family math and literacy night. And along with that, we had a barbecue dinner for over 200 families that came to school, had many math and literacy activities going on. And we also showcased our new junior STEM lab that was open for the first time that the parents and students loved, along with an art show. So, we were just so pleased. The success of the events was wonderful, and we were delighted to have all those families on campus with us. Thank you very much.[804.62][804.62](APPLAUSE).
And telling us about their week's activities at Chafunkta Middle School would be Dr. Mitch Stubbs. Joining him is Sherri Benson, PTA President, Yvette Benson, PTA Vice President, and Donna Clement, a 6th grade teacher who, by the way, recently was recognized as PTA Educator of Distinction.
Good evening, Superintendent Fols, Mrs. Hines, and esteemed board members. On February 18, we hosted an extracurricular extravaganza at Chafunkta Middle School. It was an opportunity for both incoming students and current students to get involved, meet new people, and enhance their school experience through our many clubs and activities. It was a way to connect our incoming students and our current students with activities that they both have, that they have in common, and to pair them with adults who will guide them through that process while they're with us. Also, in addition, February 27, Chafunkta Middle School held its first annual multicultural night with a family heritage celebration. TMS and PTA hosted a celebration for families by families to showcase the rich diversity of cultures and nationalities we have in our community. And I'm pleased to say, with the support of our wonderful PTA, both events were very successful. Thank you.[896.95][896.95](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. These two schools' PTAs are indicative of the type of support our schools enjoy from the parents, families, friends, and community business partners from all over St. Tammany Parish. Once again this year, every school in our parish has an active PTA organization, with our members making up almost 65% of the total state PTA membership. That's correct. 65% of the state PTA membership is from St. Tammany Parish. I would like to thank all of those who have joined the PTA, and especially thank and honor the two schools that were here tonight, Marigny Elementary and Chafunkta Middle. Thank you.[941.00][941.00](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for being here and sharing your PTA activities. Thank you. All right, Substitute Employee Appreciation Day, Ms. Dangerfield.
Thank you. Good evening. The Human Resources Department continues to recognize the contributions made to our outstanding substitute employees and support their efforts towards maintaining a safe, positive environment for our school system. Our substitute program consists of active substitute employees to help support teachers, paraprofessionals, school bus operators, bus attendants, clerical, lunchroom technicians, custodians, and other support personnel. All schools in St. Tammany Parish joined together on March 13 of this school year to honor and appreciate our substitute employees for their dedication and hard work. A memo was sent to each of the principals with recommended activities to implement at the school level to recognize their substitute employees. And of course, Ms. Pat Ferris and her team prepared a special lunch menu for the day. Each of our schools were asked to submit a nominee for our Substitute of the Year program to recognize outstanding substitutes for their service and positive impact on our schools. Each nominee will be recognized through our school system's substitute website, and we look forward to honoring our Substitute of the Year at our April board meeting. At this time, I call on Ms. Bellisario to read our Substitute Appreciation Day resolution.
Thank you. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish Public School System is committed to having competent and qualified substitutes willing to take on a variety of tasks that continue to create a positive learning environment for students when regular personnel are absent, and whereas much of a student's growth and progress can be attributed to the dedicated personnel and substitute teachers of the St. Tammany Parish Public School System, who are entrusted with the educational and social development of our children. And whereas on a daily basis, substitute teachers and employees play an important role in classroom instruction and must exhibit the flexibility needed to adapt to different teaching styles. And whereas the recognition of substitute employees for their dedication and meaningful contributions offered on any given day is important and essential. Now therefore, it be resolved that the members of the St. Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and appreciate the dedicated service of all substitute employees in the school system, including teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, clerical workers, lunchroom technicians, cafeteria monitors, bus operators, and bus aides. And hereby proclaim March 13 of 2014 as St. Tammany Parish Public School System Substitute Employee Appreciation Day. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board, with a copy being sent to all schools within the school system to post as a sign of gratitude to all substitute personnel. And I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Bellisario and a unanimous second for the resolution. Do we have any comments by the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dangerfield. That brings us to the public comments section of our agenda. This evening, we have with us to speak for five minutes or less, Dr. Robert Mueller.
Thank you very much, members of the board and members of the audience here. I am Dr. Rob Mueller. I'm one of the candidates for coroner, and I'm here tonight because I'm the only candidate that has an educational plan in my reform of the coroner's office. And I ask to bring it before the board because I want people to start thinking about it as to the good of what we can do with the community. We have seen in the past a tremendous rise in deaths of our children. Louisiana rates number one in the United States of death of our children from age 1 to 24, and that's from numerous sources. That's not all related to suicide. There's been a false gathering of information in the past with the coroner's office that the number-one death of a number-one parish in Louisiana was St. Tammany related to suicides, and we have found that that has been a falsity and that's not true. But we do know that there is a severe need for programs within the parish that we need to institute. This problem is not a problem just of Louisiana. It's not just the problem of St. Tammany Parish. It is a problem across the United States, and no one at this point in time has done any adequate type of job addressing the problem. I am going to make a commitment to you all, to the board, with your help and your input, that I would like to put a full-time employee in my office to work with the school board to go out to a school every day, a different school, different level of training, from our children and our adolescents, and sometimes to our adults. And I want them to address the signs and symptoms of some of the problems that are grieving us severely. We have about 26,000 depressed people in St. Tammany Parish. That's an estimate. It may be a little lower, it may be a little higher. But it is almost impossible to try to assign anyone and to think that we have enough mental health professionals to begin to work with that number of people, to do any amount of sufficient work. And the only way that I can see that we can work on this is by educating our children and our adolescents and our adults, our peer-level people around to begin to look for the signs and symptoms of mental health disease, possibilities of suicide. Also, educate them on substance abuse, alcohol abuse. We have a tremendous amount of deaths on our I-12 here and within St. Tammany Parish from motor vehicle accidents, from adolescents drinking. And I also want to bring to this program a sexual assault component, that we can start teaching our young girls what to look for and what not to look for, and what to do when they get to the age of womanhood and get out and start getting into social situations that may be a severe problem. So, I look for a program that, in conjunction with the board, where we can work together, along with a representative from my office, that we can hire someone that'll be not only an educator, but a paraprofessional person in all of these areas. And I look forward to being able to work with you all in the future with that. And I thank you for the time tonight.[1395.51][1395.51](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dr. Mueller. All right, we did not have anyone else sign up to speak this evening, so we'll move on to our agenda items. First one is to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation school refunding bonds, Series 2014 of St. Tammany Parish Wide School District Number 12 of the Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Tonight, we have the opportunity to share with you some good news, and I'm going to allow Mr. Schluter to bring that to you.
Thank you. Grant Schluter, Foley Udel Bond Counselors to the School Board. In recent years, this school board has saved millions in taxpayer dollars by refinancing various bond issues and also by early retirement of a couple of bond issues. You have the opportunity at night to add over a half million to that savings figure. This refinancing is of the 2006 bond issue. This school board gave preliminary approval on June 13 of last year, and at that time, we indicated to you that we would proceed immediately if market interest rates continue to be favorable. We did get state bond commission approval, and then promptly, interest rates went up. I had indicated to you at that meeting that if that happened, we'd put it on the back shelf. We'd monitor it constantly, and when interest rates rebounded sufficiently, we'd get into the market quickly. But by giving that preliminary approval last year, and by getting the state bond commission approval, it permitted us to move very quickly and get this refinancing done and get these savings locked in. And right after the pricing of these bonds and the signing of the bond purchase agreement by Mr. Fols, interest rates went back up a bit, so we would not have attained the savings that we're going to lock in right now. So, you have a savings report before you. The outstanding 2006 bonds had interest rates going up to 4.375%. You're refinancing those at 2.51%. You're going to save $504,360,000 for the taxpayers. All these savings are to the benefit of taxpayers. None goes to the school board. And that's 3.39% present value savings, and that's more than twice the threshold the state bond commission requires for this type of refinancing. So, it's a very healthy refinancing. In conjunction with this, as you know, for every bond issue, refinancing or new money, we do have to go back to standard empires and get your rating adjusted or maintained. You did maintain your Surling AA rating, and once again, they cited the good, excellent financial operations of the school board, low debt burden to the taxpayers. So, again, it's a very, very favorable refinancing. Adoption of this resolution will set forth all the terms of the refinancing, but your savings are locked in now.
We have a motion by Mr. Darmen to accept the adopting of the resolution, and a second by Mr. Alfred. Now, do we have discussion from board members? Does anyone have a question for Mr. Schluter? Do we have any questions from the public? All right, then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Now, we'll just thank you all very much, and also for maintaining your bond rating, and hopefully, on our next refinancing, we won't have to wait quite as long to complete it. Thank you very much.
All right. So, item B is to consider and take action with respect to announcing that the Parish School Board of the Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, the school board, plans to consider a resolution providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes in the Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, to be spread upon the 2014 assessment rolls of St. Tammany Parish. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. This new requirement that's required of the school system, so I'm going to ask Mr. Schluter to come up and kind of share with you the rationale behind it and the procedures that are in place to make sure that we follow all the aspects of this new policy.
This is a new legislative act that was passed in the 2013 regulation. It became effective August 1 of last year. It applies to all public bodies, not just school boards, and it requires advance notice in addition to what normally has been given in the past, whenever you either call an election or if to authorize a millage or a sales tax. But it also applies to every public body when you do your annual levy of your ad valorem taxes. So, every public body in the state of Louisiana has to now comply with this. It's being done across St. Tammany Parish. It's being done all across the state of Louisiana. And basically, the bill requires that before you can meet to levy your taxes each year, which you normally do in May, you have to, at a public meeting, make an announcement of the date, time, and location of the meeting you're going to levy taxes. You have to publish a notice of that in the Official Journal, and both of those requirements, the announcement and the publication in the Official Journal, must occur no less than 30 days, no more than 60 days, prior to the scheduled meeting to levy your taxes. So, this is a requirement now. I will say this, that that's a requirement for now. There's also pending legislation that's been introduced in this session to make, to require even more additional notifications.
All right, do I have a motion?
A motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Womack, and a second by Ms. Sealy, to consider a resolution providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes in Parish of St. Tammany for our 2014 assessment rolls. Do we have any comments from the board? Mr. Henigan. Mr. Hennigan.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Grant, I know we haven't worked up, or maybe this is to trade, we haven't worked up our budget for next year, but we're not, this is basically to give public notice.
This is correct. This is just a new legislative law that was passed to say what we've done in the past, to make people aware that we'll be coming before this board.
Okay.
Does not imply that, it should not be implied in any way that we'll be raising our millages.
It just permits you, under the new state law, to have that meeting to consider your routine adoption of your annual adoption of millages, and everyone has to do it. The parish council has to do it, school board, every recreation district, every fire district, every public body in the state of Louisiana has to do this, and has to do the additional publication requirements also. And it has nothing to do with rollback, roll forward, anything like it. It's just your routine tax levy each year.
Okay. So in the past, we just had to have a public meeting and announce.
Advertise it, and this is just a.
One more step, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dermond, a question was answered. All right, any other questions from board members? Do we have any comments from the public on this? All right, we'll take a vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you very much for being with us, Mr. Schluter.
Thank you, Ms. Schluter.
All right, item C is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 13th, 2014. Moved. Motion by Ms. Sealy, a second by Mr. Loop, to accept the minutes. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item D is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to February 13th, 2014. Kim G. Kirby, Student Health Services, 22.61 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Mullet, second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item E is appropriate retirement resolution for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to February 13th, 2014. Elena C. Cryer, Ponchartrain Elementary, 17.51 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Joseph A. Lemoine, Slidell Warehouse, 14.05 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Virginia G. Singletary, Transportation Center, 23.74 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do we have a motion to accept those retirement? Motion by Mr. Dermond, and a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item F is the announcement of principal for Carolyn Park Middle School. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Tonight, I am happy to announce the appointment of Mr. Patrick Mallory for principal of Carolyn Park Middle School. Mr. Mallory. Mr. Mallory, Mr. Womack will be coming down to share a few words of encouragement and present a book to you.
I know that you know that the academic life is a risk. It's by no means happenstance. It takes dedicated people like yourself. We attract the best teachers in the state, and that's why that happens. When Mr. Fols and Ms. Araby and Mr. Jabby and Ms. Julie get together and they come up with a slogan, "Every child, every day," that's not some fancy words to impress the public. That's a creed. We believe that.
Yes, sir.
Remember, there was a little movie called Jerry Maguire, where he played a sports, some kind of sports recruiter, and Renee Zellweger was in with him, and she said, he looked up and he said, "You had me at hello." Well, I got to tell you that we had four excellent candidates, but when we got to you, I told you, whenever you interviewed, when you said, "I see Carolyn Park as an A school," you had me there.
(laughing) Thank you.
So we expect a lot, and I believe that you can do a lot, and I'm excited about you being head of this school at the helm. Mr. Fols and I decided that we wanted a full report on this book somewhere between now and your 20th year on the helm.
Well done. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Superintendent Fols, Ms. Heinz, and the rest of the board for this great opportunity. I look forward to the successes and the challenges that Carolyn Park is going to offer me. Would also like to thank my wife, she is my rock, but unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. She has a minor bout of tachycardia that every three years or so, her heart gets to beating fast, and she has to go to the hospital to give her some medicine. And of course, that happened tonight. So I had to go to the emergency room. I was carrying her out. My sister-in-law's a emergency room nurse there, so I left her with her and my brother and a good friend of mine's wife, so she's okay. But, you know, that's the dedication that I'm going to give this job, I just want you to know. Thank you.
Patrick, I'm hoping that appointment of principal didn't give her those heart conditions, so congratulations, and we certainly wish her well.
Ms. Sealy, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Mr. Mallory, I wish to tell you a huge congratulations on your promotion and going to another school. However, our community at Sixth Ward is going to miss you, and please come back to visit us occasionally. I wish you the very best. Thank you for.
Thank you. All right, item G is announcement of the principal for Lake Shore High School. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. I am happy tonight to announce to you, board members, the appointment of Dr. John Wagner for principal of Lake Shore High School. Dr. Wagner, and Mr. Charles Harold, your board member, will come and share a few words and a book with you.
On behalf of the 5th District, which is Beeta Elementary, Fifth Ward Junior High, and Lake Shore High School, we want to congratulate you and wish you the very best at school. We have a book we'd like to give you. Schools cannot do it alone.
This is true.
We won't even ask you to make the report on it. But thank you very much. We do wish you the very best in your position, and hope you enjoy it as much as the book and the position.
Thank you so much. I intend to.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Receiving this appointment to serve as principal of Lake Shore High School is so much more than an honor to me. It represents an opportunity, an unbelievable opportunity of a lifetime, as well as a dream come true. Both professionally and personally, I am committed 100% to Lake Shore High School. I am vested in it. I am committed to continuing the excellent standards we've set for our school and pleasing the community in the process. I do know that I cannot be, could not be at this place in my career without the help of some very special people. For starters, Mr. Billy Percy, principal of Slidell High School, has been a continued mentor for me and administrative advisor, as well as a reliable friend. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Brendan McCurley, for whom I previously served as assistant principal at Lake Shore, for modeling strong and steady leadership practices and allowing me to experience shared leadership. As a result of partaking in shared leadership, my own professional growth has been experienced, and I am fully prepared to lead Lake Shore High because of those experiences. Also, I would like to acknowledge our secondary supervisors, Ms. Denise Parker and Dr. Regina Sanford, for simply being a phone call away at a second's notice. And finally, for my family, friends, and administrative team at Lake Shore High School for their continued and unwavering support. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you both as you start this new chapter in your career. All right, item H is approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole for Business Affairs Administrative Meeting held on March 13th. Mr. Dermond.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. We have the following recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting. First recommends adoption of a resolution authorizing St. Tammany Parish school system intervening as a plaintiff in litigation entitled St. John de Baptist Parish School Board in all versus State of Louisiana in all, Doggett number 622693, in the 19th Judicial District Court, and to engage special counsel to represent St. Tammany Parish school system therein.
Do I have a motion on that? Motion by Mr. Loop, a second by Mr. Harold. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Secondly, recommends acceptance of the changes to the district handbook for students and parents.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask Mr. Fols to provide us with some additional information.
Board members, as you recall, last week, there was some conversation about which one of our schools had uniforms and which ones had IDs as we were discussing these changes to the handbook. Provided to you tonight at your desk was a list of our high schools, whether they had uniforms or not, and whether they required IDs or not. As you can see from the list, all of our high schools, whether they had uniforms or not, do require IDs. The second page listed for you the junior high schools that have uniforms. And as you can see, all but one of those schools have uniforms as well. The initial motion was to carry, continue the current motion, which allowed the principal to decide whether they wanted to have an ID or not, if indeed, they had a uniform at the school. After suggestion from Ms. Heinz and others, and we're in agreement that we think it would be a good change to the policy, that no matter whether you had uniforms or not, that you would be required to wear IDs at the junior high and high school level. So if that is the wishes of the board from the administration, we would certainly support it and think it is a good idea.
All right, I'm going to call on Ms. Mullet.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Heinz. I would like to make that substitute motion that we do include that all students in the junior high and high schools are going to be required to wear a student ID.
All right, do we have a, so we have a second. By Mr. Jeter. All right, so we'll take a vote on that motion. Well, first, we'll ask for any comments from board members. Do we have any comments from the public on that? Then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Thank you.
Mr. Dermond.
Okay, do we have to vote on the motion itself?
No, the substitute motion. That's the end.
Okay.
All right.
All right, third, recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Capital Glass Company of Mississippi in the amount of $135,760 for the replacement of exterior doors at Covington High School, STPSB, project number 1471. Not so moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Dermond, and a second by Mr. Loop. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Fourth recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Non-Sport Services Incorporated in the amount of $299,200 for the track resurfacing at Mandeville High School, STPSB, project number 1318.
Motion by Mr. Hennigan, a second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Fifth recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Certified Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC in the amount of $563,370 for the Phase III re-roofing of the main building at Covington High School, STPSB, project number 1472. Not so moved.
Motion by Mr. Dermond, second by Mr. Loop. Comments from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number six recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Our Boss Roofing Company Incorporated in the amount of $354,000 for the Phase II re-roofing of classroom wings at Slidell High School, STPSB, project number 1327.
We have a motion by Mr. Lamarck, and a second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number seven recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by CM Combs Construction LLC in the amount of $157,000 for the gym floor replacement at Boyett Junior High School, STPSB, project number 1322.
We have a motion by Ms. Bellisario, second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number eight recommends the acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Roofing Solutions LLC in the amount of $96,800 for the classroom building re-roofing at St. Tammany Junior High School, STPSB, project number 1324.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number nine recommends acceptance of a low base bid submitted by Roofing Solutions LLC in the amount of $479,110 for the re-roofing, for the roofing replacement of the administration gym and classrooms at Folsom Elementary, STPSB, project number 1319.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Ms. Mullet, second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Ms. Heinz, that completes our report from our committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dermond. All right, item I is recommends authorization for Superintendent Fols and/or Board President Hunt to execute cooperative endeavor agreements with other public entities relative to portable buildings at Slidell High School and Fifth Ward Junior High School. Mr. Jabby.
Yes, board members, thank you, Ms. Heinz. You haven't lost your minds. Y'all did approve this last month. What happened is Slidell Police Department was to get three portables. Fire District Number One in Slidell was to get three portables, and Fire District Nine in Bush was to get the other portable. Since that time, Fire District Number One cannot take on three portables because of the cost involved in moving those. They can only take one. So as per your action at last month, we have to come back to you each time there's a change or another one of these. So we do have two other fire districts, Fire District 11 in Pearl River, and Fire District Four in Mandeville. They're each going to take one to complete this process of those seven portables. So we're here to get your approval tonight to recommend that Fire District Number One will go from three to one portable, and that we will issue the other two to Fire District 11 in Pearl River and Fire District Four in Mandeville. And we need a recommendation.
And our procedure would be to bring this to you in a committee first, but because we want a tight timeline, we want to get these portables off of these campuses to help us start next year, you're seeing it as an agenda item tonight, and that's the reason by skipping the normal committee as a whole process.
Thank you.
So moved, Ms. Heinz.
Well, Ms. Sealy made a motion, so do I have a second, please? A second from Mr. Womack. All right, do we have any comments from board members? I'd just like to state that this is at no expense to the school system, that these are moved.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item J, certification of board members Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Dermond, Stephen J. Jack Loop III, Charles T. Harold, Rowan V. Tipton, Peggy H. Sealy, Robin P. Mullet, Ronald Ron Betancourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Panks. Ronald Ron Betancourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Pank Sr., John C. Lamarck, Ray A. Alfred, and Mary K. Bellisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2014 presented on March 13th, 2014, as mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 1753. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. As Superintendent, I do certify that the above-named Board members did participate and complete the certification as noted on our agenda.
Thank you very much. That brings us from announcements to announcements. I'd like to thank the robotics teams from Boyett Junior High School, Mandeville Junior High, Lake Harbor Middle, and Honey Island Elementary Schools for their informative, interactive displays, which were presented in the atrium tonight before the Board meeting. And we would also like to thank the sponsors of the team, as well as the principals, who support these innovative efforts. And we would also like to thank the parents. I know this is a very time-consuming endeavor for the parents, but you can see that the students were learning so much, and it was just a great illustration of good things going on in our schools. Number two, students will not report to school on Friday, March 21st, because of Professional Development Day. And there will be a special Board meeting on Thursday, March 27th, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of student expulsion hearings. There being no further business to come before the Board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.